All roll.
Bird.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Stein.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Pulcetback.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Instrom.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
Uh, no changes. Move to approve.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pulcetback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, uh, tonight we're going to present a plaque to Swan Creek Cabinet Company who did our benches. And, uh, just want to take a minute, thank you for everything you do for the community, the people you employ. This is wonderful what you've done for us. I've sat here 20 years and looked at the same old, I think they were the original 1939 benches, but if you can see. And I, and I can't thank you enough and we appreciate you. And I have a plaque that I'd like to present. I think there's, we have a few employees that are right.
So.
If you want to come forward, I'm going to present you this plaque and. A shout out to our maintenance person, Mike, who helped out make this happen. This was a lot of work to get these benches out of here. Right, Trevor?
It was.
Get them out here downstairs, out to their shop, get them back in here.
All right.
And, uh, but we really appreciate it. I think we should get the whole council on this picture, this is something that.
You want to?
Yeah.
Stand up. Going to be a long.
I'll have to get the benches in the picture.
I'll read the plaque, it says, uh, presented to Swan Creek Cabinet Company November 15, 2023. You're outstanding service and excellence in heaven through your work restoring and refinishing the city council desk with the city of Boone. That I will put in the council together.
Am I in the wrong side? Am I now with you?
Yes.
Thanks, right? New desk. Got to get that 99.6.
Hey, next up on the agenda this evening, we have our annual tax increment financing report. And I will turn it over to Maggie.
Sounds good, everyone. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. It's nice to see all of you in person this year. We have passed out and it's also in your packet, your annual TIF and debt report. So I'll just briefly walk through, um, some of these pages with you as a reminder as to kind of what the information is you're looking at. In our red section, we're outlining any general obligation debt that the city has outstanding. You have the 2015 and the 2020 bonds outstanding. The 2015s are callable, you just have two payments left, the, the June of 24, um, principal payment and also the fiscal year 25 principal payment. Um, the 2020s, they will become callable after 2026 and that's why we've drawn that line under the principle and, uh, of 285,000 there. We give you in the header, we give you the date that they were issued. The TIC, I remind you, is the true interest cost. Look at that number. It's 185 and 148. That is not what we're selling bonds at today, unfortunately. Um, probably, uh, we got a lot of questions in a 10 to 15 year bond today. We're probably in the upper 4% range. Um, if we look at that, um, historically in the last 25 to 30 years, uh, we were there in August of 2001. So right before September 11th, we were in a five and a half to 6% GO range. So we just, it just hasn't been there in a while. We've gone up a little and then there's been something in the market that has taken them, those interest rates back down over the last 25 years. So, uh, with that being said, interest rates are higher. We do always protect you with a call feature. So if you do any kind of, um, borrowing in the, in the near future, while interest rates are still at this level, um, they will always be protected. So you could refinance them if interest rates dropped. We give you the total principal, the total principal and interest. And on page two, we show you the different ways this debt is going to be paid. You're bringing in some TIP revenue, sewer revenue, stormwater revenue, water revenue and some road use tax. You have a total property tax levy for fiscal year 25 of approximately 344,000. I do point out that in fiscal year 26, um, that debt service levy is scheduled to go away without the inclusion or, um, uh, issuance of any additional debt. And that's partially because the outstanding debt from 2020 is paid with all these other different revenue sources, um, aside from a debt service. It's time. We go on to our orange pages and this outlines the revenue debt that the city has outstanding. This revenue debt is sewer revenue related. It was a refunding. So we went from a pretty, uh, 3.25% interest rate at the time down to that 1.10% interest rate. Uh, these cannot be paid with anything other than the revenues of the system, of the sewer system. Must keep the, uh, rate structure in place to be able to pay this debt. This does not count against your debt capacity. You are paying this though, I will say with TIP revenues, which is acceptable because of revenue from, um, the improvements that needed to be made were more related to commercial and industrial growth in your community. So you're using TIP revenues to pay, um, this debt back, which is completely acceptable. Just no property taxes in that far right column as, as they cannot be levied for that debt. Our purple section is our tip rebate obligation section. So a rebate agreement, I remind you, as you've entered into an agreement with a developer. That developer says, I will build something new or I will improve something and it will increase the valuation. And you've said, we will rebate apart of those taxes back to those new taxes that you're going to pay. So we've got some, we've identified them by the tip area at the very top. We've got some commercial, um, and industrial, but we also have residential. Your residential agreements, they are subject to low to moderate income set aside, which really just means that not only do you, uh, have to contribute or, uh, rebate back to the developer, but you must also set aside low to moderate income if they're not building low to moderate income housing in your community. So we've identified this on a couple of pages and given you the total amount. Um, it is, should be noted that all of your agreements are annually appropriated. And that means that annually you take action through your November or earlier meetings to say, we are going to appropriate and pay these rebate agreements for the next upcoming fiscal year. The nice thing about that is if you have them annually appropriated in the agreement, we don't have to count the aggregate amount of the agreement against your debt capacity. We only have to count that one year. So for example, in fiscal year 24, because they're all annually appropriated, we only have to count $221,000 against your debt capacity, where if they were not annually appropriated, we'd be looking at the aggregate amount, which is in total 2.5 million dollars. And so that makes a significant difference on your debt capacity if we only have to count that one year against it. So that's the reason we always make that suggestion. Bond council will also make that suggestion when having that conversation. We go into our yellow section. This is the section where we outline how your debt is being paid. So in this section, any of that red or the orange debt that we showed for the GO or the revenue debt is being paid with different sources. Um, the 2020 GO debt is being paid out of the southeast district, a portion of that is. Um, and then that sewer revenue debt that we talked about, uh, on the orange pages, part of it being paid from west central and part of that is being paid from the southeast district. We show you that you're going to transfer that back into, um, the debt service levies of these so that you've got that money there. But then also you are going to levy the amount of TIP dollars that you need for those rebates plus the low to moderate income. So we draw an arrow to the far right column and we show that for fiscal year 25, you need no less than approximately 851,239 in TIP certifications. Um, so that, that's what you're asking the county for. Very similar to the number from last year, pretty similar to the numbers going forward for the next few years. Again, they'll fluctuate, that number will, because we're adding in the TIP rebates. So as TIP rebates come on, as TIP rebates drop off, um, more frequently, that that number will adjust with those. We go on to our green pages and we talk about the general obligation debt capacity. I'm going to have you look at column number two and read straight down with, um, the actual valuation for the city of Boone in fiscal year 24 is 863 million, 380,000. 5% of that number is what your debt limit is. So that's 43,169,000. The only amount that we must count against the debt capacity is those general obligation, um, bonds on that first page. And that's only 2.8 million dollars, 2,860,000. We also must count the annual appropriated rebate agreements of 221. You will pay back general obligation debt this year of 645. And so that leaves you remaining debt capacity of approximately 40,732,000. Very healthy position, probably the most healthy the city has been in, in, in a long time. Um, just because again, you've, you've really reduced the amount of debt that you have at this point in time. So there's just not a lot of debt that's dragging on your debt capacity, which is, is great for you. Uh, we tell most of our cities that you don't want to issue more than 80% of your total debt capacity. Sort of leaving that 20% there as a cushion, a just in case, an emergency type fund. So if we deduct off about 8.6 million, which is our 20%, you still have the remaining debt capacity that you could feel comfortable issuing against 32,900, uh, 32 million and about 32.1 million. With that being said, you can issue 32.1 million. It's how you're going to pay for it, right? And what the projects are that you're going to spend. So I, I always point that out that you have plenty of debt capacity. It is figuring out ahead of that what we're going to do and how it's going to be paid. So that's just something to consider. You grew by about 2.2% um, from last year. We've implemented a 1.5% growth. So to that effect, we know that your actual valuation is going to grow up significantly next year. Um, and that's because across the board, the state of Iowa, we're seeing about a 25% increase in valuations. You all got those nice little letters from the county earlier this year telling you that your property value went up on your house and you didn't do anything to it and et cetera. So we know your valuation will go up. We will consider it to be kind of a one-off and that it won't happen in the future. So we'll look back to your growth kind of in the future to say beyond 2025, we anticipate there could be, you know, one and a half to 2% growth, um, going forward. This is not affected by rollback. This number is completely the 100%, the actual valuation. So this is before taxable. This is before you start talking about budget. This is before you start talking about House File 718 and how that's going to affect you. This is completely on a separate playing field, just because it's the total valuation. This goes on for a couple of pages, so you can see sort of when you're out of debt completely as well as rebate agreements. Um, we have four different tick districts and the blue pages. And so each district gets two pages. So I'm just going to go through this first one with you and I'll let you look through the rest of them, um, at your own leisure. Someday when you want to fall asleep and, uh, you can pull your TIP report out and look at it. So, um, going, looking at column number two in the southeast district, let's read straight down. That's basically your 24. I remind you, this part of the report says, this desk right here is your base value in your TIP district. This report is showing anything that has grown above that base value. So this is all TIP growth in the southeast district since its inception. So we've got about $75 million of growth in commercial property, $38 million of growth in industrial. Got about, uh, 744,000 of personal property agricultural that has grown that, that number fluctuates with ag values, most definitely. Um, and then we have about $169 million in residential. You will notice that you grew significantly in residential from year one, column one to column two. Part of that is because the multi-residential classification went away. So multi-residential got rolled into residential. And so you see it's gone and next year when there's nothing in column one, we will eliminate that, that part of the report anyways. Total property valuation, um, TIP value in, in column number two is 195 million, 720,000. We take that times the TIP tax rate of $30.72. You remember that rate is protected from debt service levies of the city, the county, the school, the community college, school instructional, Pebble, things like that. So that produces about $6 million in TIP receipts that are available. You're using some for general obligation debt. You're using some out of this TIP district for revenue debt repayment on that sewer revenue. And you're using some for rebate obligations. Unclaimed TIP dollars is about 5.3 million dollars. We're not telling you to go grab the 5.3 for every dollar that you take. It's going to have a negative effect on your general fund if you're asking for more and not growing at that same level. You've got to grow at the same level of, of increasing your askings for that to all level out and not have a negative effect on your general fund budgeting practices. So, um, that's just showing you really that those dollars are not all being used. You are letting growth flow back into the city, the county and the school district budget on an annual basis, which is great. Um, you did grow by 14% in the southeast district last year. Um, again, we anticipate we'll see some significant growth going into the 2025 fiscal year. Um, but again, we'll consider that kind of a one-off. So we have your west central in here. We have your south Boone housing and your north Boone housing, which are really those two are really coming on in the, in the last couple of years based on rebate agreements. So with that, I answer any questions that you have about this, anything else you want to, about bonding wise.
Any questions for Maggie?
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
Can you just summarize in a couple of sentences, our overall kind of picture?
Yeah, financially, you're in a really strong position. Um, you have low, uh, low debt. Right now, um, a low load of debt between your general obligation and your sewer revenue debts. Um, so that puts you in a good position that if you need to do any borrowings, the ability is there. Um, I also look at the, the drop of the tax levy. That's up to you. If you politically want your debt service levy to go away, completely fine. But now would be the time to start considering what other projects that the city has to do to replace that debt service levy. If, if there are projects that need to be debt service levied, going into this next fiscal year, that's really needs to be the consideration on. Do we let that levy drop completely? Do we take part of that levy and, and use it for a new project, um, things like that? So.
All right. Thank you. Have any debt coming off this for fiscal year 2025?
Correct. It would be going in.
Basics.
Yeah. So it'll be going into, so it's not something that we're talking about. It'll be going into fiscal year 26. So, so it gives you some points, but that's, that's the conversation I would have with any city whose debt service levy is dropping significantly. Um, in that timeframe is to just think about that. And if you choose not to do anything, that's completely up to you. That's okay. But that, I don't want that missed opportunity because no one wants their taxes to go like this. If humanly possible, they'd like them to just kind of go like that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Don't forget to vote tomorrow.
Done.
That's funny, so don't forget to vote.
Okay. Okay, next up, uh, update on the Boone County Convention Business Bureau, Chris.
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Good evening.
Um, got a little handout for y'all. So, um, thank goodness, I don't have to try to understand any of that. My God, it's easy compared to that. Um, tourism, uh, I, I can't express enough how we just come off a really good season, right? Um, tourism season was really good. Uh, uh, super nationals, I'll start there. Um, super nationals set another record this last year, uh, great attendance out there. Um, and soon you guys will get to see, um, the full view of the soul of Iowa, which I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Uh, the Iowa State Fair, every year, you guys know that's a big deal for us. We have the biggest county tours and booth down at the Iowa State Fair. We need about 66 volunteers in order to fill those 11 days. So, um, this year I was excited, uh, most volunteers we've ever had, very few shifts were left open. So, um, I didn't have to spend all 11 days down there this year. So that was exciting, but, um, the state fair is a big deal. Uh, the booth costs us a lot of money. That runs us about $12,000 each year. So, um, you know, we, we need to have volunteers there that can send people to Boone County to show them all that we have. Uh, nights on the green was another good year. Uh, you know, obviously, uh, events or weather prohibited and we had a few bad dates. Um, May was extremely rainy and, uh, probably the worst night of my life to this point. Uh, I went home, I said to my husband, um, that was about the stupidest thing I've ever done. So, but, um, we came up with another plan. So if it happened again, because it happened in July, so, um, after July, we, um, definitely had to come up with a backup plan. And so going into next season, I think we have some of that covered. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit about solo Iowa. I told you guys last quarter when I was here, this was probably the most exciting thing that, um, I could, could have ever done. Uh, what it cost us, it didn't cost us anything but a friendship and relationship that I have with the state tourism office. Uh, I'm so excited that we were selected for this and, um, this video that you guys are going to get to see tonight has been a sneak peek. Jay Bird was, um, is the gentleman that, uh, is a nationally known drone pilot. He's one of the best in the nation. So we were so fortunate, we couldn't have afforded this. So thankfully, um, again, our partnership with the state tourism office, we were selected to be a part of this. Uh, this is just a short snippet, but because this is the first time a drone has ever flown under a train. And when I thought he said he was going under a train, I thought he meant under the bridge, under the train. No, literally from the bottom of the tracks to the bottom of the train, he flies the drone and then he flies it down the middle of the, um, rail cars. So it's impressive. And then, um, in April, we hope March, April timeframe, um, the full video for Boone County will be out. Um, which is exciting. We hit obviously a lot of different places, so I'm excited to see that. Um, I believe they'll really sit at the state tourism conference, uh, in March. So with that, let's watch this short little clip.
Is there sound?
It is. Just, yeah, from the beginning, I think. Right?
Watch this. Oh, man.
Lots of children on this video and to ask children to not watch a drone is extremely difficult. But to fly out that window, pretty amazing.
Probably a perfect day with the sun out.
Yeah.
It was. Lighting is wonderful.
That was a beautiful.
Yeah.
Evening. Yeah. So right now, that video is running, um, if you go to the Travel Iowa website, that video is on their homepage. So that's exciting. Um, that's awesome. Um, and then Jay has it on his, uh, Instagram right now. He has over 7,000 impressions on that. So again, um, just so cool. I was going to share with you guys, Amy from the state tourism office sent me some, um, comments that have been, uh, shared. And I wanted to share with those with you guys to, so one of the comments was, I never thought I would say this, but I want to visit Iowa. Great video. This is what we're trying to do. We're trying to give people a different perception of what their perception is of Iowa, right? They think we're flat, we have corn and that's about it. We have a whole different perception, especially here in Boone County. A well done man, what a beautiful part of Iowa that you captured perfectly. Now this is a cool video from a little old, beautiful Boone, Iowa. So just some of the, um, comments that have been shared. I think it's so incredible and, um, I can't wait until we get to see the full video and I'll share that again. Um, probably in the springtime, uh, when we get to see that. So that's a little bit about the highlights, um, improvements. I've talked to you guys a little bit too about how, um, group travel has been one of the slowest things to come back. Uh, last year I went to the Wisconsin Dells and, um, talked to 46, uh, travel planners. Had, uh, six minutes to sit down and explain to them why they should bring their group travel here. Um, we know that, uh, people that get on buses and, uh, participate in group travel wind up spending a lot of money. So, um, we had six tour buses that came this last year. Uh, we hope to double that, increase that in a lot of ways. Um, but for me, that personally is a great number. Uh, it's really come back strong and we, we want to continue to, to grow that. And those are just the ones we know about. So just the ones that have contacted me, we know that the Boone and scenic valley railroad has more group buses that go just there. But these are ones that I put together. I get to send them to the historical society, to Mamie's, to Colorado Grill, to all those different places. Um, that's, that's what we do. We help them put together an itinerary and so we had six of those this last year. Um, new for us this year is featured Fridays. If you don't follow us on social media, I'd encourage you guys to visit Boone County. Um, lots of great things happening there. Um, one of the most exciting things for me is this chart, our hotel motel tax. If you guys haven't noticed this, our hotel motel is at the highest peak it has ever been, ever in Boone, Iowa. So I'm so excited about that. If you guys, um, I think, look back to when we became a standalone entity, you can see that it's, um, been beneficial to, um, not only the city of Boone, but to our organization. That's all we do, right? We just promote tourism and so that's what we're doing 24/7, trying to get people to come to Boone County and enjoy things here. I'm sure you guys know, um, you know, that Madrid down, uh, at the Iowa Arboretum, building the new treehouse villages. I know you guys think, oh, it's down in Madrid, but honestly, I'm sending all them people to Boone to stay. I'm getting them to extend their stays here and I'm wanting them to enjoy that as well as come to the rail explorers or ride the train or any of our other great attractions. So even though it's outside of our county, I still get them to come and stay and spend their nights in our hotels. Um, some of the season stats I think are impressive, uh, rail explorers, their goal going into the season was 30,000 riders. They exceeded that, they had 32,197 riders, um, 44 states were represented. Um, and then 20% um, of those people were from out of state. So what we're doing out of state, uh, targeting Illinois, Wisconsin, Omaha, Nebraska, all those different places. We're getting those people to actually come and enjoy our attractions. Then the Boone and scenic valley railroad continues to just do great things. They had 44,228 riders. All 50 states were represented, 18 different, um, countries. If that's not amazing, that's amazing to me. 18 different countries, people from different countries came to Little Boone, Iowa to ride that train? I mean, that's so cool. And then 70%, 76% of their dinner trains and their, um, and their lunch trains were sold out. Great numbers. They continue to do great things. Um, and, and we just continue to, I say it all the time, I'm not sure that we can stay on this trajectory of, uh, you know, having new attractions come and, um, open each year, but wow, we're sure going to capture everything, uh, while it is. So what kind of questions you guys have for me?
Great job.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Thank you. I love my job. You guys, if it doesn't show, I, I try to, I, I do, I, there's nothing I would rather do every day than wake up and promote all the tourism for Boone County in so many different ways. It's not just one, there's so many ways that, that we're trying to get people to come.
But you're doing a really good job. And I said, one of the things that I always tell myself is I want to make Boone a destination. And I think that really is adding to that of, there's enough things going on that people come and spend the day.
Right. That's. And to that point, Linda, you know, that was one of our, um, goals for this last year was to not let people just think of us as a weekend getaway, right? We want them to spend four or five days and stay in our hotels and extend their stays. And that's really what we're trying to do is get them to stay and capture them longer. No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number four, report of standing committees, policy administration, Linda.
No report.
Public safety, uh, David.
This one item, Your Honor, we've had a request for the adopt a street for Corporal Rogers Send Drive Airport Road.
Okay.
Isn't it here that?
Yeah, here.
But, uh, we'd like to see those and we would recommend, the committee would recommend approving that.
Okay. Second, call the roll.
Yeah. For the time period, we'll just put it in force today through, uh, 2024. And then they can come back and renew it, if that's okay.
Yeah. Sure.
Thanks.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pulcetback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
That's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Utility committee, Terry.
Um, in your packet, you saw, and Bill will cover this under the engineering report, but the substantial completion for the UV project. And the, the committee would suggest that we jump up and down and say yes when we get this thing done.
Economic development, do we have a meeting tomorrow?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
We have a meeting tomorrow, do we, Bill?
Sorry.
Do we have a meeting tomorrow? It's on. Do we have a meeting tomorrow? It's on.
No, second Tuesday, so it'll be the fourteenth. Second.
Terry, anything under economic development?
Uh, no report, Your Honor.
Uh, Department reports building official Dave Aides. He's out today. Okay, Finance Officer Andrea.
Yeah, in your guys' packet, there was a annual finance report. Um, you can make that bigger. Try to make this as quick as possible. Um, because I know you guys have already had financial numbers today. Uh, but I did want to just summarize what this report means. You see it?
Yeah.
So basically, what this report is showing is that in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we brought in twenty-six million dollars in revenue, spent twenty-two million dollars, and our cash balance was thirty million. Where I'm getting these numbers is right here. Right there and then down here. Then, um, what I want to make sure everybody understands is is that thirty million dollars is not a free-for-all where we can just spend it. So most of that money is, it is in special funds, capital projects, and proprietary funds. And I'm, I'm sure that most of you guys don't know what those funds mean. Um, so special funds would be your road use, your local option self-tax, and your trust and agency account. So you can only spend those funds on those things. Um, capital projects, of course, are funds where we have put money aside to do projects. Proprietary, uh, funds is your water, your sewer, your stormwater, your enterprise funds. So majority of that thirty million dollars is basically spoken for. Um, so it does look good. And like Maggie was saying, our financials look wonderful. Um, but they're not a free-for-all for us to just go and go wild on where we're going to spend that money. Um, and that's the first of, the first two reports of many coming up, um, in the next few weeks. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney Jim. Director of Public Works Waylon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick update on the Marion West Park Avenue. This week, they're grading and compacting aggregates. They've got it down to where it needs to be, and they're doing compaction testing, and everything looks like it's moving forward. Next week, they're planning to pave the, I mean, Tuesday, the fourteenth is the pavement day for the main run. After that, they will finish the week doing the intersections, driveways, and around intakes. And the week of Thanksgiving, they plan to backfill, clean up, and be out here. So it's awesome. Looks like we've got sixty-degree weather, and it should be good.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have an engineer.
Thank you, sir. First item is change order number three for the wastewater UV disinfectant improvements. Packet in front of you, if you have it. Change order number three. This, uh, actually will be a deduct from the contract, an amount of twenty-three hundred dollars, uh, for the seating and the maintenance of it down there. This was, uh, decided, or we worked on this during a punch list meeting down there on October thirteenth. Uh, we feel we can, uh, get to where it needs to, to be better than the contractor come. We've already made arrangements. So contractor agreed twenty-three hundred dollars from the contract. That'll cover what we will need to do to, to get it where it needs to be. Item number two, in place of two five-foot square box outs around the sanitary sewer structures, they're going to pour two six-foot long, one point five wide.
What's that? First change order.
No, this is all together. So this is all part of order number three.
Oh, okay.
So they'll do that. Instead of that, that again was decided in the walkthrough. Uh, that was approved by Councilman Mormon as well as Perry from S E H R Engineer and Fox Strand. Number three, as discussed during the punch list walkthrough on October thirteenth, revise the power supply location for the site pole light as listed. There's no, there's no change in the contract price list recommended by Councilman Mormon as well as, uh, Perry and Lori from Fox Strand. So I'll answer any questions you have. If you don't, I'll, I'll need a motion if you don't mind to approve change order number three. Item two and three were, uh, basically a wash, and we wanted to expedite the project. That's why we approved that. So. So I'd make a motion to approve.
Second, call the roll.
Thanks.
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
My second item is accept certificate of substantial completion for the wastewater UV disinfection improvements project. This goes back as well to our meeting there on the thirteenth of October. Uh, after review, uh, of what needed to be done, a punch list was created that's attached to this certificate of completion. The contractor is still responsible for it. This will allow us, allow us to move forward on this project so that the city can meet some deadlines that they have as far as the grants. And, uh, it still keeps the contractor responsible for keeping this. So I'll remind you, this is substantial completion. It's not the final. So they are to have this punch list completed by November fifteenth. We'll monitor it. Perry will monitor it. Fox Strand will monitor it and make sure that these things are done. But again, this will allow us to move forward as far as our grants. So there's no issues with, with filing those. I think you covered everything. I'll answer any questions. Sir, Councilman Mormon, you may have some comments, if I didn't cover anything. No, uh, this just secured those grants that we were worried about. Um, we made some adjustments to get there, but we got there. So I would make that motion to approve this substantial completion.
Second, call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes. Hey, next up, Public Safety, Chief Adams.
Uh, two quick things, Your Honor. First of all, uh, this Friday night, we'll have our drive-through chili, uh, fundraiser for the Boone Firefighters Association. Uh, so swing on through five to seven. There you go. Um, second thing is, is, uh, I met with the contractors today, uh, for an update on scheduling for the fire department addition. Um, with the nice weather this week, they should have, um, several substantial projects through. And we are told that, uh, the week of Thanksgiving, everything should be down to a small punch list. So, uh, we'll have a, hopefully for the first council meeting in December, we'll have a, um, completion, uh, approval for it. Uh, I will, uh, the truck got pushed back two weeks, so I will find out for approval of the truck somewhere in the first week of December.
And then will you bring that for show and tell?
What's that?
Will you bring that then so we can see it?
Let's just make sure it gets back from Florida.
Okay, in one piece.
Then absolutely we will. But you know, it's warmer than. Get it to January.
Yeah, I know. Uh, Chief, we won't.
Thank you. Um, uh, real quick before we get into this, um, the Boone Police Association had their chili, uh, feed from Hy-Vee last week. Uh, it's a fundraiser for Shop With A Cop. We raised nearly fifteen hundred dollars. Um, uh, the people of Boone to come in, and Hy-Vee, Hy-Vee, uh, prepares all that chili for us for free and no cost. And, and so it was a great program, or a great night for, of, uh, serving a lot of chili. So we slung a lot of chili that night. So, so we were there, and we were pushing out as fast as we could. Um, in our continue, our continuing quest to hire our last officer, um, we had interviews, um, on the twenty-eighth of October um, with civil service, and we have five candidates that the, uh, the civil service, um, uh, thought should move forward as, as potential, uh, officers for us. So, um, I need somebody to, uh, motion to certify this list.
I'll approve. I'll make a motion.
Oh, second, call the roll.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Um, after the civil service interviewed these candidates, um, our officer panel interviewed them as well. And, um, I have, uh, issued a conditional, given a conditional offer to one of these people. Um, there's so, some conditions to be met, so I'm not going to make that public yet, but, um, it looks like we should be able to fill our last opening.
Thank you. Hey, next up, City Administrator Bill.
Thank you, sir. First item is the approval of the policy for downtown sidewalks. Last council meeting, we had a discussion on this. Uh, we moved forward, uh, with what we presented at council approval. This is the official approving of the sidewalk program or the policy for downtown. So unless you have any questions, I'd take a motion to approve.
So move. Second, call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay, next item, uh, just a reminder that the Boone County Economic Growth Annual Meeting is tomorrow, eleven thirty to one. Uh, we did have enough, uh, for a table, so actually we'll have a city table there. We'll see you all there. Second, uh, as a reminder of our CIP committee meeting is this Thursday at nine o'clock. Councilman Mormon, Councilman Bird are on that committee. However, for those of you, uh, that are new or are interested, the meeting starts at nine o'clock. You're certainly welcome to come and see how that goes and, and how that, uh, that meeting, uh, goes through for approval. Third, uh, reminder for those of you that are attending of the groundbreaking at Ag Certain, which is this Thursday at one P M. And then my last thing is, is there any interest on the elected officials? Uh, staff was talking about this wall. Uh, to complete the, the remodeling here about putting the city of Boone up on it. Is there any interest in that? Would you like to leave it to where it, where it is? Now, I can't say how we would do it. It's my ideas and then present them to you. Um, but obviously, we, we want to move forward without permission from council.
Yeah. Nice. Yeah, nice.
Yeah, it'd be okay to do something. I'd just try to keep it with the, you know, jibe with that ornate pet.
We thought black letters. Match the desktops.
Yep.
Look at the lockups.
Okay, so we'll get something and present it at a later date.
Okay.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Uh, number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like removed and discussed separately? And if not, I'd need a motion to approve. A movement. Second, call the roll.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes. Hey, number seven ordinances. A, first reading ordinance twenty-two ninety-nine to change zoning ordinances for the city of Boone, chapter one seventy-five. The move. Second, call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes. Number nine is council member comments this evening. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? Uh, I need a motion to go into closed session as authorized by chapter twenty, section twenty point one seven three as amended. Code of Iowa for the Boone Council to discuss strategy as to collective bargaining with the city employee bargaining. So move. Second, second, all the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth? Yes. Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.